All right, welcome to candidates forum for Beechwood tonight. My name is Marcia Goldberg, I'm the moderator for all three groups tonight. The event is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland, the Hillcrest Area Chapter, also co-sponsored, especially this part of the forum, by the Beechwood PTO and the Heights Hill Pressland Press Grant and the American Association of University Women. I do not live in Beechwood. I don't have a lot of really close knowledge about what's going on in Beechwood, although I come through here all the time, shop here. So that question will come up with the mayors and council more than with the Board of Education. Timing: each candidate will give a two-minute introduction of themselves. And then we will get into the questions that have been sent in over the past week, more coming in every moment. And we will have, everyone will have one minute to answer other questions, because we want to cover a lot of questions tonight. And we give these candidates, and there's only seven candidates, time to speak. I, during this part of the event, I have decided I do not, I will not take any questions about COVID. The school district is handling the pandemic in the way it believes is the correct way to handle it. So I'm not going to ask any questions about that tonight. And I don't want to bring up anything involving national politics either. Those are my ground rules. You can bring up whatever you like, but those are my ground rules for what I'm going to ask you. So why don't we start, I'm going to introduce the candidates quickly first. First, we have To We Grow, sitting right next to me, then comes Kim Allenby, Wendy Leatherberry, Jillian Delong, Corinne with an N at the end of her name, Caputo, and then Valerie Charms Mason and Miriam F. Weiss at the end. Julie, would you like to start us out, or you have to actually?
Sure, I would love to.
Two minutes, and oh, the timers are sitting right here in front of you. They'll signal you when, when there's 20 seconds left, oh, after, after one minute and then...
Three seconds, three seconds.
Okay, okay, sounds good, thank you.
And they won't start until you talk.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, my name is Julie Brouw. I am the mother of two boys, Antonio Jr., who is a sixth grader attending Beechwood Middle School, and Michael, who's a third grader and he attends Brighton. Antonio Senior and I chose to move our family to Beechwood in 2019. A few years prior, we were both working at Beechwood City Schools in different capacities. Antonio Senior, who was a criminal defense attorney, served as an assistant high school wrestling coach. I was fortunate enough, eight years ago, that my employer, University Hospitals, placed me at Beechwood Schools. Over those years, I not only worked as the Beechwood athletic trainer, but also as a high school athletic schedule district senior search co-advisor. I had the amazing honor to treat and care for our students and help our seniors explore different career opportunities. While working at Beechwood, my family developed many friendships and we felt at home, which is why we moved. My reasons for running for Beechwood Board of Education are really simple. I love Beechwood and I want to strive for greatness by keeping our focus on our kids, ensuring a well-rounded, excellent education so our kids can be ready and successful in the future. We have an amazing staff who are passionate about our kids and work hard to provide the best education. There is no reason why our schools are not number one, the number one schools in the state of Ohio and in the country. During my campaigning, people often want reviews on hot topic items. Most of the time, these topics are very polarizing and with various thoughts and opinions. I am someone who will listen to all sides of the story, ask questions, seek answers, and then make a decision that is best for the kids. It is not my job to convince anyone to change their thinking or even agree wholeheartedly with their thinking. I view my job as a school board member to find what is within the purview of the school board and the district and what is not. I am a caring and thoughtful person who is good about being understanding and not judge pendle. I am a decision-maker and a well-respected leader. I welcome different thoughts and want to have an honest, real, respectful conversations. Thank you.
Next is Kim Allenby.
Good evening, oh, sorry. Good evening, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the rest of the sponsors for having this important candidate forum. I am Kim Allenby, I'm running for school board. Our family moved to Beechwood in 2015 when our two daughters were in preschool and first grade. We've had an excellent experience here. And I'm beyond how to be in such a diverse school community that supports education. I'm also a full-time working mom, I'm a physical therapist of 26 years. And that experience would bring to the board someone who listens compassionately, works well with all people, and is very analytical. I'm also a product of public schools. I grew up in Shaker Heights, right down the street there. And that afforded me the opportunity to get my undergraduate degree and graduate degree. So I do know personally how important a strong formative public school education is. I have immersed myself in the community the last six years. And it's helped me figure out what I would like to focus on as a board member. I want to ensure that all students have the resources and support they need to reach our highest potential. I want to celebrate our diversity and have a more inclusive culture and curriculum. And I'm going to increase the parent and community, parent and community input and engagement in important school matters. So I hope you, by the end of this evening, will support me. And my slate mates Jillian Delong and Wendy Leatherberry, we all have something very important to offer to the district. Thank you.
Kim, could you pronounce your last name for me?
Allenby.
Allenby, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Wendy Leatherberry.
Good evening, good evening, oh, sorry. Okay, good evening, I am Wendy Leatherberry and I'm very happy to be here. I want to thank the league and the PTO for the work put into having us here. I know it's a little more complicated these days. I am really honored to sit here between my two slate mates. The three of us, Kim Allenby, Jillian Delong, and myself are really strong public school advocates.
Could you move the mic just a little closer to me, thanks?
The three of us are very strong public school advocates. But I'm here for the moment to talk about myself. I am running because I really believe that this district is at a tipping point. We can either continue the progress that has been made in excellence in academics, in social emotional learning, and in equity and inclusion efforts, or we can make a turn rather precipitously backward. And I think it is absolutely vital that we continue that progress and that we make sure that every student in our district has a chance to truly excel and have an excellent education. I think that this district has navigated the pandemic better than just about any district, I think in the country, honestly. And that is a tribute to Jillian and her colleagues on the board and the administration. It has been absolutely amazing to see the way this district has navigated what is basically the most difficult experience anybody could imagine in the last century. So I bring that viewpoint and I bring the experience of being a mom in this district, as well as having served on the Woodhills University Heights Board of Education. Bought that for a time, I was president for a term. So I know what it is to be a school board member and that is why I am seeking the office. And I hope to earn your vote, as well as votes for Kim Allenby and Jillian Delong. Thank you.
Now we'll move to Jillian Delong, who is the only incumbent running this year.
Thank you so much. My name is Jillian Delong and I'm currently on the Beechwood School Board. I have two children that attend Hilltop Elementary. And I work for Cuyahoga Community College. I've been with them for 12 years. My background is accounting. And every day, I'm balancing academic needs with administrative budgets. I got on the school board in January of 2020. Two months later, the pandemic hit and the schools started to close down. I can tell you, since then, I have worked tirelessly with the administration making very difficult decisions. Let me also remind you, there was no policy and procedure. There was no handbook of how to run a school during a pandemic. What I can tell you, also the other thing, the first six to eight months of the pandemic, data and information was changing, weekly, daily, hourly. What I can tell you is every decision was based on science and facts. I want to continue this work with the Beechwood School Board. I am asking for your vote. And I'm asking for you to vote for my slate that include Kim Allenby and Wendy Leatherberry. Thank you.
Thank you, next is Corinne Caputo.
Hello, I want to, I want to first thank the League of Women Voters for having us tonight and giving us the opportunity to speak. I want to say that I'm honored to already run with Miriam and Valerie. I thought that I will be telling you a little bit about me, but I have another idea. I think you can find things about me and who I am on our site. What I chose to do for this two-minute introduction is a little bit different. I'm a manner house professional and I really want to keep my belief and philosophy about educating children. And as a manner house professional, what I would like to share with you is that the most important message that school can give our students is to empower them to be the best students they can be. I'm going to tell you a little story. My late father, Charlie Caputo, was an outstanding history teacher. He was loved by all. And he was loved, why? Because of how he made the students feel about themselves. His assumption was that every child has unique abilities and therefore it took the time to observe, to discover, and to learn from them. As a result, he was capable to turn low achieving students into high achieving ones. When he started in the early 60s, there was very little thing we knew about learning disabilities. He told us a story about the student was feeling in school class because she was not reading her assignments. Charlie just observed, he noticed that she was marked. He went to the library, he bought her books on tapes. And the student went from an F to an A. And there's many more stories like this. Now we know so much more about manner house and learning disabilities. And we, because of that, there's many senses that we can take. There are three traditional models. There are the medical model that says that communicates you are sick. There's a helping model that communicates you're weak. And there's a trauma-based model that's saying you are broken. Now, I'm not saying the model are not good, they are good. But you cannot expect a communicator child to be sick or weak or broken without undermining his confidence and ability.
Thank you, Corinne. And now Valerie Charms Mason. Goes fast.
Hi, everybody, thanks for having me here, I'm Valerie Charms Mason. And like Corinne said, while everybody's telling you who they are, I'm not going to do that. I invite you all to visit to votebeechwood.com where you can learn more. Tonight, I'm here to set the record straight. There's been an unprecedented amount of labeling, hate, and mudslinging in the community and on Facebook. And apparently, I've been labeled the anti-CRT candidate by our opposition. This is not who I am. I am, in fact, the anti-politics NK-12 candidate. Now, what does that mean? It means I don't want 1619 Project, I don't want 1776 CRT, BLM, Blue Lives Matter, or anything else about which our teachers cannot remain impartial. I don't want any of it. Politics is inconsistent and calls for advocacy and activism to fight for your side. Our kids can't truly comprehend what that means and what the consequences of their actions are. Hence the word minors. So we're here to teach them how to think, not what to think. So here's what I want. I want our Beechwood kids to have amazing comprehension in math, language arts, and history to develop critical thinking. By definition, critical thinking is disciplined thinking that is clear, rational, open-minded, and informed by evidence from data, facts, observation, and research. What I've seen is a move away from being a top-ranking district, which was the very reason why I moved here 14 years ago. As of last year, we are now ranked number 38 in Ohio, which is a huge drop from where we were. Five years ago, my stepdaughter failed eighth grade, but they advanced her anyway. Last year, my son should not have passed senior year, but they graduated him anyway. He had a language arts project that he was struggling with last spring. And when I pressed him about it, he admitted that he hadn't had to write a report in four years. I almost plucked. This is also distressing. We're more focused on graduation rate statistics than the quality of the education being taught. My focus will be raising the bar to help all of our kids become better thinkers, not just test takers. I hope you would all support me in my endeavor and me in my two minutes. Thank you.
Finally, Miriam Weiss. Don't hold the mic too close to your mouth, Valerie, next time.
I'd like to stand because I'm short. Okay, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for giving me this opportunity to introduce myself. I am Dr. Miriam Weiss. I am an example of a woman whose academic achievements started with the public school education. I graduated from public school in 1965, before many of my fellow candidates were born. I received my bachelor's degree in 1969 and graduated from medical school in 1973, along with just eight women out of a class of 116. Years later, I retired as a full professor of medicine from Case Western Reserve University. During those decades, I took care of patients, taught medical students at residence, and ran a research laboratory funded by the National Institutes of Health, the NIH. After retirement, I studied bioethics and obtained a master's degree. I continued to collaborate with my colleagues in bioethics at Case and to teach third-year medical students. So here's the critical question, how do I feel about committees? At Case, I led the committees that kept my lab and the two specialized services I directed functioning well. Also, I sat on grant review boards at the NIH, joined other experts in creating policy guidelines for the National Kidney Foundation. I truly enjoy the give and take that brings creative new solutions to difficult problems. The Beechwood School Board will benefit from my skills as a critical thinker and collaborative communicator. So why vote for me? Because I have a lifetime of perspective to share that can benefit children, their parents, and all who value nurturing the next generation.
Thank you. I have received a great many questions from Board of Education. But I think the first thing I'd like to do, starting with Dr. Weiss, could you explain to me how your slate evolved? How did you come to have a slate? The three of you? You can each take it one at a time. Were you friends, did you know each other?
You know, we didn't know each other, but we found a common approach to thinking about the problems of education. And so we...
You need to move it closer to him, yeah.
We didn't know each other, but you know, as we have spent time developing our platform and thinking about how we would like to use this opportunity, we've grown very close. And we do share similar philosophies of education, of child development, and of the work of the schools and the place in the larger community.
Thank you. Valerie, maybe you could explain how you met?
What if I don't remember the answer?
Oh, well, then, just say if you can't remember.
We were brought together, I think, by a common denominator, a friend of all of ours that kind of brought us together. And as we began to talk about the things we were concerned about, as Miriam said, we did find kind of a unique team built almost out of just the hard work we put in together over the last couple of months. It was amazing, we sat around the table today and said, wow, we really would make a great team. We bring different strengths and different communication styles and enough diversity of concern that I think we really have been able to enhance each other over this time, so hopefully that answers the question.
No, thank you. Would you like to add anything, Corinne?
Yeah, well, as Valerie said, it was a couple of friends who put us together. And it was an incredible journey because we really discovered each other, different personality, different philosophy, and how we have similarities, especially about educating children, about our philosophy for the, our goals for the Beechwood Schools. So that's really where, you know, how it happened, we just discovered each other.
Yeah, that's great. How about you, Jillian, would you like to explain how you met your two friends?
Absolutely, I would love to. Being the only slate that we all currently have kids in the Beechwood Schools, all the groups kind of meshed together in one way or another. So when it came time to start thinking about running for school board, it was just a matter of talking to other Beechwood School families to see who would be interested, also talking about the shared community values that we have, that Beechwood has. And what we found was that we do have that common shared value.
Thank you. Wendy, would you like to add anything?
I mean, Jillian pretty much summed it up. It really was a matter of seeing what was going on and saying, you know, gee, I'm thinking about doing this and I'm coming together to agree that really our values align, so why not work together?
Thank you, and Kim?
I don't have anything to add, as you all said.
You don't have to. And Julie, I'm everyone over here. I think I should interject right now that Beechwood voters may vote for any three of the candidates. You don't have to vote a slate. You have to, in fact, vote for three different people. So I want me to make sure all the voters out there realize that. If you say, okay, I want to vote for one person, you do not have to vote for someone else on the same slate. So Julie, you're just as likely to win as anyone.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I like to look at myself as like the lone, or the lone vicer, I guess. You know, I'm just one person looking for one seat. I feel really passionate about Beechwood. I've been, like I said, I've been here for eight years, I've seen a lot. And when I took a new job at University Hospitals, pretty much the very next day, I started working on my campaign and my thought process for a seat on the Beechwood Board.
Thank you. All right, a lot of the questions we've received have been about school rankings. Now, sometimes the comparisons don't make a lot of sense. When you say Beechwood ranked in the top 3% in 2009 and in number 37 in Iowa in 2021, you can't really compare those two statistics. So you'd have to get use the same percentages. But one of the, what I really want to ask about is what do you think about school rankings? And do you worry about them, and how much do you worry about them? And what does the state ranking do to what the schools offer? Does it change, does it change what they offer? Does the administration worry about it, should they? How do you fix it, if you want to fix it, if you should fix it? All right, let's see, let's start with you, Kim, do you mind? School rankings, I mean, it drives everyone crazy as far as I can tell.
Yeah, on the one hand, you know, people, some people feel like it's just, you know, kids are learning how to do a test. But I know that that was a consideration when I moved to Beechwood. How, it did make me feel like it was a reflection of how, how well the kids and how strong the district was. So it is true that the rankings, you know, have changed over the years. But I want to point out that Beechwood is still in the top 1%, that we were the number six school out of 600.
Are you talking about in Ohio?
I'm sorry, in Ohio, sorry, in the Ohio district.
That's a whole problem.
Yeah, and that is a problem. I don't believe that that should be the only thing you look at a district for. We also, there was also a little bit of skewed metrics on how they ranked us on the US News &amp; World Report, which I only have 15 seconds to talk about, so it's not enough.
Well, someone else can join in.
Thank you.
You know what, I'm going to, if anyone wants to answer a question, just signal to me. Jillian, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I would like to answer this question. Because just as you said, rankings can be skewed to look one way versus another way. So this ranking, the US News &amp; World, we ranked 35th in Ohio. There are, and for the high schools, there are 872 high schools, we ranked 35th. We are in the top 5%. Additionally, Hilltop was just named United States Department of Education as a 2021 National Blue Ribboned School. There were only 16 schools in Ohio that received that. These are the rankings we should be talking about, these positive things. Additionally, when we're talking about our schools, our staff, our students, there is a lot of pressure on them. I don't think anyone wants to add more pressure to get to a higher percentage. I think the schools do an amazing job. And I think on one way, you want to talk about rankings, and then on the, in a different way, you want to say that they don't matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
How about anyone down there want to speak about this?
Yes.
Go ahead, Valerie.
So what I really think is, my own experience, that, you know, a lot of people moved to Beechwood because of the ranking of the schools. You know, they're really attracted by the excellence of the schools. And what has been happening is there has been a drop. You know, even if it's, you know, it's a different way to understand numbers and ranking and so many factors, the fact is, and a lot of people will compare, and they look at Orange and they look at Beechwood and they're looking, oh, Orange is ranking better than Beechwood now. And in a very short amount of time, in the last two years, Orange School, you know, have much better ranking. So it has to do with the perception of people, you know, what, because they, they look at this, but I know also colleges look at this. Colleges, they look at, and they don't really look too much at the middle school, they look at the high school. So it's really the high school that, as, you know, it's, I think it's important to, when you look at rankings, yes. Even if there's so many variables and it's going to appear.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I got 60 seconds, ready? Okay, first of all, rankings only show, rankings only talk about test taking. That is, that is true, but however, we need to realize that, you know, it is the way that colleges look at people, it is the opportunities and doors that are opened to other employment, to acceptance into schools. It's the way employers evaluate new hires, even if they're not college educated. I'm looking at the math scores and I can tell you that the state average, our scores went down from, excuse me, 761 to 706. So we went down 50 points in math. There is no reason to make excuses for it, it's unacceptable. Still too close, sorry. Also, blue ribbon schools is excellent, it's a great achievement we've made. That applies to elementary and middle schools. I don't think that's where the majority of the issues happen. Really, what happens is when you move from the ele, excuse me, the middle school to the high school is where we're seeing big drops.
Thank you. Go ahead, Julie, you know, let Julie, Julie answer that.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. You know, as somebody that is newer to the Beechwood community, right? I've only been here a couple of years, I've been in the district 80 years. And, you know, I can, I can speak to the fact that the community really values where we stand academically. And yeah, those, those numbers can go up and down and there can be a lot of factors that go into why we are ranking higher or lower in a particular year. But there are still community members in Beechwood that have no kids going to the schools that are still very concerned about where we are and where we're going. I think they keep, we need to keep the focus on the academics. I think we've pulled away from that just a tad, and if we can refocus, that would be the goal.
Thank you, Jillian.
Yes, I just to one of the points that Valerie made about our math scores, I think we need to look at the past 18 months and what the schools have been through and what our kids have had to totally change the way they learn to understand that those could have skewed some of those math scores.
And I'd like to respond by saying in 2016, it was 761.
Oh, that's okay, let's, let's move on.
Thank you.
You know, fixing up, fixing up.
Right, it's, it's not something you do overnight. And COVID has, even though you won't imagine it, it's been very tough on all school systems.
Could I just, can I move forward?
Yes.
I can do this, I think, in 15 seconds. I think that the scores are very problematic. And one of the things that's actually very interesting is that the... And one of the things that's actually very interesting is as the testing keeps changing, if you, if you really try to look back, you find that there are different ways of testing is done. But that's not the important issue. The important issue is, is this an early sign that we should be examining in more detail what our curriculum is actually focused on? And, and trying to find out if things, if the rigor is changing and how we can return to a more rigorous, basic education? Because I think that we all agree that it really is the basics. And I probably will say this a lot of times tonight, but it is numeracy and literacy that we give our children, to give them the tools to make something of themselves in the future. And if we are starting to slip, we need to try to, to figure out why before we slip further.
And Wendy?
Hey, I just have to take some issue with a couple of the comments that have just been made. And that is this notion that the schools can only do one or two things well, okay? Literacy and numeracy are very important, absolutely. But if a child does not feel seen or included in the curriculum or in the day-to-day learning that they have around history, around language arts, around every different aspect of their lives, they're not going to learn the numeracy and the literacy well.
Thank you. Kim, did you want to add anything?
I did want to add something, saying I have spoken to the students in our school and I've spoken to other teachers and administrators. And I can guarantee you the rigor in Beachwood High School is still there.
Thank you. We also have a related question, at least I think that's related. Is the district and its children being adversely affected by competition with private and charter schools? So how do you make the case for public schools to the parents in your district? Wendy, would you, Julie, would you like to tackle that one first? Or do you want me to bother somebody else?
So again, I'm not going to totally repeat myself, but again, I'm newer to Beachwood. And it kind of, when I came in here, it was noted that even though Beachwood is a public school, it is absolutely comparable to the private schools in our area. And so I think that it's, it's a tribute to our, our city that, that we have such a strong school district that is public for our kids, but that we hold the same standards as private schools in the same area as us.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to tackle that one? Wendy?
I would, I would echo that, Julie, that what we've seen through my recent graduate and through our second grader is very much a very rigorous curriculum that is, I would absolutely put up against any private school. The difference, the key difference being that we have a remarkable diversity of student body and families that utilize our schools, which is a huge, huge plus for our kids as they look out toward the future. You know, people make choices for various reasons and I'm not going to criticize them. But certainly, having a diverse student body and diverse friendships are a huge value for the future.
Thank you. Anyone down at that end?
I, I would just like to say something about parental engagement with the school. And I think that one of our main platform ideas is to be transparent and to make the curriculum open to all. So Beachwood has actually started along this process with its, what do you call it? With its engagement committees. They started in 2019. Our idea is to open that even further so that parents have a way of knowing exactly what the curriculum is constituted of. And it's that kind of choice that I think might be the reason that some parents choose not to use the public school and to take their children to places where they may feel that they have more control. So our goal on the school board will be to really be transparent and open and give more control to parents.
Go ahead, Valerie. Not too close.
Is this good?
Yeah.
So I didn't tell you guys earlier that I've also graduated from Shaker and I have the most profound appreciation for diversity in the schools. One of the reasons I moved to Beachwood was because it was so diverse. I have spent my entire life missing Dr. Martin Luther King. That is not an exaggeration. At the same time, Wendy makes it sound as if, you know, we make friendships and that compensates for when school grades or school rankings or the quality of the education is failing. And it is going in the wrong direction. Why do people take their kids to private schools? There are numerous reasons. But one of the ways we can prevent that is by making this school district so good and so unbelievably excellent and allowing kids to learn how to communicate much more effectively. Got to tell you, the truth of the matter is, I watched my nieces and nephews graduate from Beachwood. They were not very good writers. I blamed my brother for that. And then I watched my own kids go through the school and they're not great writers. Now, maybe you'll all say that's a genetic thing and that is entirely possible. But I think the rigor can always be improved. And rather than kick each other about what hasn't worked, let's do it. Let's make, let's make it better.
Could you, Karine, would you like to, maybe you could explain to the audience, how does a school board affect curriculum? And how does that, do, do, do you like to tackle that?
How does the school-
Yeah, how does the school board itself affect what the curriculum is across the district?
Well, so I think, in my understanding, is that the school board is really here to monitor, you know, the, the, the goal and the vision of the school district. And it's here to put the input of the residents and the parents of the school. So I think the school board is to really bring people together and to really see if there's a consensus about the educational needs and, and the vision for the school. We are here to represent, really, as representative of the, of the public.
That's fine. I'm, you know, I'm asking questions I have in my own head as well. Jillian, would you like to talk about, you have experience on the board? You can maybe explain a little bit more about that.
Yes, thank you. To answer your question, the position of the school board is to support the superintendent and the treasurer. Those are the two people that we directly report to us. Below that, part of their administration is director of pupil services and all the resources and the curriculum directive. Also, there are, the state helps to direct the, the manner of what is taught. So if, and there was a great article in Cleveland.com today about this. If you're getting on a school board to think that you're going to change curriculum or you have some direct contact, that's not what the school board does. The school board works with the superintendent and the treasurer. Thank you.
And Wendy, would you like to talk about this, what the school board actually does when it comes to what books kids are reading?
So as Jillian very correctly stated, the school board's primary job is to hire and supervise the superintendent and the treasurer. And really, that's because the superintendent and treasurer are meant to be experts in their fields, which we happen to have two really stellar experts in, in their fields. And the board then works to work with the community, engage with the community to make sure that they know and understand what's going on. If there are concerns about how the schools are operating, if there is a crisis like COVID, how do we handle these things? How do we deploy resources? The main way in which the, the board can interact around curriculum is through the superintendent and those people that, that he, in our case, he supervises. So certainly, the board approves expenditures for resources and books, but it's primarily the superintendent.
You know, I'm speaking of, I failed to tell you at the beginning, we're doing 50 minutes for the Board of Education, so we have a little bit of time left. And I got, I have to cover levies and finances. So Kim and Julie, can you address the need for the next levy? If you have any understanding of that or discuss the finances of the system? A lot of people are, you know, complain about tax increases. There's no way around that. When we had Bill 920, you know, freezing tax levels. So go for it.
I'll do the best I can. So we just had a presentation from our, our treasurer just last night about the state of our finances in this district. We have an incredibly well-run district with our finances. Consistently, we have been able to stretch out levies and have levies be requested, you know, from the public less frequently than other districts. And even this year, they did a five-year proposal at the last levy, I mean, I'm sorry, yes, in 2018. And, and we were able to, we'll be able to push it back because of the amazing management of our treasurer. But we do need to ask people for money because the state doesn't provide all the money. And, and neither does property taxes to have a well-run public school education that focuses on academics, but also includes the other wonderful things like a strong art program and music. Every now and then, we need the public to help. Thank you.
Julie, would you like to chime in on finances?
Sure. I was also at the, at the presentation last night from Michelle Mills and Dr. Hardest. And, you know, I worked with Michelle Mills actually personally for the last eight years. And she really, really runs a tight, well-run district. Yes, there are times when she has to come to the public. She doesn't want to. She doesn't want to push for those levies. She does try to extend it out. But the fact of the matter is, you know, costs, costs do go up and there are certain things to consider. Even through COVID, you know, we were, some funds were taken away. And, you know, she, she did her best and the, the kids were never affected by that. I think that really attributes to her. And I think if she says we need a levy and it comes to that point, I think she's going to back up the reasons why. And then we should really take a look at it and decide if we're going to support that.
Thank you. We're going to have to start our two-minute closing statements. I know it goes quickly, doesn't it? We're going to stop at your, we'll start at your end, Miriam. And you can cover any subject you want that has come up that you haven't been able to talk about. Two minutes each.
Okay, so I attended the most recent board meeting and listened to some of the wonderful presentations by the treasurer. I was impressed to say that Beachwood is in a state of uncertainty and there are several things that are changing that will affect the tax base. And so our stance for our slate is that we need to be careful. We need what we would call a performance audit, which is different from the excellent audits that Ms. Mills has done every year in order to see if we can find any places where we can change priorities. So I also wanted to disagree. We are not going to be working for the superintendent and the treasurer. We are going to supervise them and hopefully be able to reflect the parents' ideas about what they want their children to be learning in a very open and positive way to the superintendent and the treasurer instead of following their dictates. So our, our goal, and one of the thoughts that I had was I was going to say what I would do first and what I want to do, oops.
Well, send a note over to Valerie. Okay, Valerie. Your turn.
I would like to just say that-
Now, wait a minute. Your time is up.
Okay.
But the audience is always out there.
Please ask us questions at votebeachwood.com. We really do want to answer all these questions. We have given a lot of work and a lot of time and study to these things. So please feel free to reach out to us. My final comment is one that I've stated I feel very deeply about, and that is the regroup of politics in our schools. School board as well as city council positions, there's supposed to be non-political elections. It is a call to service that is supposed to be impartial and put the greater need of the community first. It's supposed to be a position that allows all parents to engage and to be heard, not silenced by political PAC monies. Perhaps some of you have seen this beautiful flyer going around this year from the opposition team. A big, bold ad showing that the DNC bought and paid for candidates for our community. Perhaps that is what you, perhaps that is what you guys wanted. So please feel free to vote that way. For myself and my fellow candidates on our slate, our goal is to be those impartial representatives of your community. We can return our schools to greatness, but only if we all work together to make it so. I truly hope you will vote for us, vote for me, and give us that opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Karine?
Yeah, what I wanted to say is my closing statement is, the culture has changed. I've lived in Beachwood for about 20 years. And it used to be a community where, you know, you could feel that people really, there was a lot of, much, much more collaboration. And in the last few years, there's been, and maybe it's because of the system, it's the culture, the culture has changed. There are much more divisions and that really concerned me. My, you know, being in my house, what I do a lot is to help people create bridges so they can really feel safe in, in, in expressing their opinion. I'm a strong believer in models of change where you build on strengths and where people really collaborate toward a, a vision that they develop together in terms of what's the best aspiration we have for school academically, but at all levels. What I want to say was, I was at the Inter-Cultural Awareness and I saw, oh my gosh, this is happening. This is great. And what I would really like to see is more projects like this where we need to expand this so we can have meaningful dialogue and relationship. Because as I said before in my statement, my opening statement, I really believe that the difference is about the quality of the relationship we have with each other, the teachers, the administrators, the parents and the students.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a little bit more. So what I want to add is that I remember years ago, and it's back of what, you know, it was a dodgeball, the school organized the dodgeball tournament. And it was incredible because everybody participated, the student, the teacher, the administrator. Not only were they a lot of fun together and you bonded, but because people felt so connected and we feel safe with each other, a lot of the immediate division or the, the conflict just dissolved on their own. So I really, what I wanted to see is really break the culture to that level of collaboration.
Thank you. Jillian?
Thank you so much. I'd like to start by telling a little bit of a story. If you come to the Beachwood School Board meetings, you have this great opportunity to listen to presentations from teachers, from staff about really great things that are happening in the schools. Recently, the ELA department did a presentation on their curriculum audit that they did this summer. One of the things that they found was there was a lack of representation of neurodiverse characters in their books. So they added some more books. And come this fall, there was a class and they read one of these books where there was a main character that was neurodiverse. At the end of the class, this teacher said, a student raised his hand and said, "I am neurodiverse and I am proud." And in that moment, we all got chilled because that child may never remember the book, the class, or the teacher, but he will remember he belonged. He belonged in Beachwood schools. That is what we want for every student. It's not, it's about how, how to get it what we didn't get right before and how to get it right in the future. I am asking for you to vote for myself, for Kim Alany and Wendy Lagerberry. Thank you.
Wendy?
Thank you. Jill, that, that story is so important. And it's representative, as you know, the ELA audit came about because of the parent equity and engagement teams at the different schools who brought forward to the district, who raised the concern that the books the kids were reading didn't include, didn't include people who looked like them. And my understanding is that some folks in the ELA department were a little resistant to it. But they worked, they dug in with the administration, with parents, and they found, oh, wow, yeah, the books aren't, weren't representative. And so then they worked together and they, they solved it. They came up with other books that are representative and inclusive. And that's what the work of equity and inclusion is. And then the work of equity and inclusion, it's not just buzzwords. It is truly about outcomes for our students and making our schools better for all of our students so that they all can feel like they belong. Because when they feel they belong, they achieve and they do better. Not just socially, but academically as well. Finally, I do want to address the suggestion of a performance audit. Because ultimately, what a performance audit does is an external- Because ultimately, what a performance audit does is an external group or person comes in and they assess how money is being spent. So are there things within the Beechwood schools that the state will tell us we can cut? Absolutely. Do our, our families, do, do people come and move into Beechwood to have state minimums? No. We move to Beechwood, we live in Beechwood for the schools, for the Beechwood schools. So my question is, what exactly would you like to cut?
Kim, you're next.
We should be able to answer that.
No, you know what, I wish we could. But we have to move on to the city council after this, so.
So once again, I wanted to thank all the sponsors and everyone, the moderator as well. And, you know, it's, it's very important who, who you have on, on the school board really matters. You know, because the school board will be addressing important things like how do we continue to get out of the pandemic? How we address our academics, which of course academics, we want to keep strong and want to keep going forward with that. We could always improve with that. Let's be more inclusive with that. You know, how we're, how our kids are dealing with social and emotional well-being, our programming. So I'm asking you for your vote for me and my slate mates, Jillian and Wendy, sorry, Jillian Delong and Wendy Leatherberry. Because we are strong public school advocates. We believe in funding the schools so that we have a well-rounded approach to academics. And we respect our diversity, include people so that they feel like they belong as well. Our district has changed. We're not the way we were in 2009. We have now more, we have 51% non-white and 49% white. So we need to include people. You know, we also believe in collaboration with respect. We value everybody's opinion and want to take that into consideration. So I hope you really look, we have philosophical differences as how, as to how we would approach, how we would, the focus of our schools and our school board. So thank you, I hope you learned your vote tonight.
Thank you. Julie?
Thank you. As someone who has been in and around education at all levels for almost 30 years, but more specifically worked inside the school district, it allows for a very unique perspective that rarely presents in a board of election candidate. In my professional and everyday life, I always work as a team player and a leader. I help those that need help and compliment those who are doing well. I'm organized and a diligent planner. I like to plan in the short term, but also look at the big picture. During my tenure at Beechwood Schools, I had built strong relationships with our students, current and past, their families, our staff, administration. I understand how Beechwood Schools functions from the many hats that I wore for the district and have developed understanding and respect for Ms. Mills and her department, Dr. Hardest, to the building principals and administrators, Mr. Chase, Mr. Shreeta, Mrs. Miller, Ms. Pony, and Mr. Peters, teachers, coaches, custodial, and maintenance staff and beyond. Over time, I built great relationships with them. I have also met with, listened to, and learned from current and past board members over the years and during my campaign. I've had conversations with and listened to and learned from other city and collective officials. I have heard from community members, teachers, staff, and administrators on ways that we can improve. I understand the inner workings of Beechwood Schools and so then, more so than any other candidate. In closing, I can assure you that if elected, I will continue to make, take amazing care of our kids, our staff, and our families. We will work as a team focused on goals, accountability, and opportunity to reach the greatest levels of success. As a close-knit community, by coming together while celebrating our differences, I take this responsibility extremely serious and will work hard to not let anybody down. And just one final thought, my son, my uncle, Steve Hilltop, I was nervous, sorry.
Thank you all very much. We're going to clear out the tables quickly so the city council candidates come up here. And to be honest, I do want to tell you, all of these candidates, all of the candidates responded to our questionnaire at vote411.org. So if you want to read more about each candidate, go to vote411.org, put your address, and then you can see everything on your ballot.